We will call the Stevens County Public School District Board meeting, the regular school board meeting from Monday, April 25th, 2016 to order. And Sue, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Daley?
Here.
Ms. Ebel?
Here.
Ms. Stewart?
See if you're listening. Ms. Earler?
Here.
Mr. Kanto's?
Here.
Mr. Levine?
Here.
Ms. Portson?
Here.
Ms. Ranos excused. Ms. Scott?
Here.
We have a quorum, eight present.
Okay, moving on to item three, which is approval of the agenda.
Move for approval as amended.
Any discussion or changes requested?
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto's?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Ranos is excused. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
And just to note, Judy called me, she is under the weather. And just felt that it would be better if she was not here this evening.
See, I wasn't with her.
So we can do the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Nothing under item five. Item six, there was no one that signed up. Is there anyone here this evening from the public who would like to address the board? And there was no one here tonight. So we will move on to item seven, which is the selection of temporary chairperson to preside for the election of the new president. Traditionally, it is the superintendent. I am looking for a motion.
A motion to have the superintendent conduct the election of board president as temporarily presiding for the nomination.
Second. Any discussion or changes or requests? Could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto's?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you very much. And now, we will take nominations for president. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Meg Earler for president.
I'll second that.
Meg Earler has been nominated in second. Are there any other nominations for president? Are there any other nominations for president? May I have a motion for the nominations to be closed?
I'll follow.
Second. Now, we can do just a unanimous, I forget what they call it.
If there's only one, I defer to the Roberts people.
Yeah, it's a declaration of, they call it something. I can't remember what it is, what it is.
All those in paper say aye.
That's not it, but that's good.
I move the electing of President by acclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second by Dan.
And I don't think you have to close the motion for the nominations.
Okay.
Am I right on that one, Amy?
Correct, if you call for it twice, you don't have to call.
Right, then you don't have to make a motion to close it.
Okay. So we have a motion by Sam, second by Dan, to have a vote by acclamation for Meg Earler as president. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Meg Earler is now the president for the school board for the coming school year. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The meeting is all yours.
I am relieved.
Thank you.
You're relieved, but you're saying you're relieved in more ways than one. Now, we are moving on to item V, which is the election of Vice President. I am asking for nominations for Vice President. Do I have any nominations for Vice President?
I'll move to nominate Jeff Ebel.
Do I have a second?
Do I need a second?
Do I need a second? Oh, I don't need a second, okay. Okay, do I have any other nominations for Vice President? I have Emily and Chris Scott. Okay, so we have Jeff Ebel and Chris Scott. Do I have any other nominations?
I'll nominate Sam Levine.
Okay, so we have Sam Levine. Do I have any other nominations? Do I have any other nominations? Okay, so we have three. And we have voting by written ballot, with votes to be recorded in the minutes. Lee will hand out the ballots. We are able to do this by law, but we are required that each of you put your name on your ballot, because we need to record who the actual ballots handed in by.
Who do you want us to give the ballots to, Sue?
And you may give them to the superintendent, please.
Shall I read them out loud and then Sue record them?
Yes, that would be great.
Chris Scott. Chris Scott. Jeff Ebel. Chris Scott. Jeff Ebel. Chris Scott. Jeff Ebel. Chris Scott.
Jeff Ebel, three. Chris Scott, five. Chris wins.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. No, let's not change now. We can do it after. Stay in that seat for a while.
We are calling for election of the clerk. Could I have nominations for clerk?
I'd like to nominate Barb Portson for the clerk.
Do I have any other nominations for clerk?
I'll nominate Sam.
Do I have any other nominations for clerk? Okay, so we have two nominations for clerk. We have Barb Portson and Sam Levine. And again, Lee will hand out ballots.
Get my exercise tonight. Barb Portson. Barb Portson. Barb Portson. Barb Portson. Barb Portson. I feel like this is an Academy Award. Sam. Barb Portson.
And Barb Portson.
Barb, seven, Sam, one. Barb's our new clerk.
Congratulations, Barb.
You get to sign things now.
Yeah. And they'll find you wherever you are.
Start practicing your signature. Okay, we're moving on to item AD, which is the election of the treasurer. Could I have nominations for treasurer? Chris?
I'd like to nominate Amy Daley for treasurer.
Do I have a nomination? Any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer? As there are no nominations, other nominations for treasurer, I guess I'm looking to a motion for appointment by acclamation.
Two. Second.
Okay. Motion by Portson, second by Scott. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Okay. Amy, you're our new treasurer.
Right. Keep an eye on that money.
Okay, item E, appointment of board secretary. I am looking for a motion to approve Susan Kudrowitz as the Board of Education Secretary.
Move to appoint Susan Kudrowitz.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Do we call a roll? Let's do this by acclamation as well. Could I have a motion to do that? We can just do it?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion. Oh, we need, let's do a roll call. We've got it on the agenda, just roll call, go ahead.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto's?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Congratulations.
We've only eight zero so far.
I think our tongues are...
You weren't saying what you said. We're gonna get out of that one, there is no way.
I had hoped, not for you, for me.
So now, we're moving on to item eight F, which is the election of chairs for board standing committees. So item F1 is Business Services Committee. Could I have a motion?
I move that Amy is determined to be the business committee since the treasurer is usually given that position.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
Do I have any more nominations?
This is a motion, one. This isn't a nomination, I don't think. This is a motion as opposed to nomination? I think with committees it is.
Yeah, with committees it is.
They're not officers, they're just...
So you have to move for the appointment of... Okay, any discussion with respect to that motion?
You could ask if anyone else would like to serve in that position.
I could. Would anybody else like to serve in that position?
I've had that for the last two years, and I would do it again. There's a lot of things that come up annually that with experience you get to handle a little bit more quickly because of that. So, yes, I would express an interest in chairing that committee again.
Any other comments?
My only comment would be, I think, as a board, I think to the extent that we can have everybody having a leadership experience, I think that's a good thing. So, to me, that's a goal. In the past, it has been treasurer and business services that are one in the same, but to the extent we can have everybody have the ability to be either in an officer role or in a chair of a committee role, I think it gets better buy-in, it gets more ownership for everybody. So that would be my only thing, is we look to elect committee chairs. This past, you know, time, Trish was business services and treasurer. Jeff, because of a vacancy in a committee, was Vice President and Chair of Human Resources. But that was an after-the-fact thing. Initially, it was the idea of spreading it around. So that would be my only comment. To the extent we can do that, I think we'd be a better...
Well-rounded.
Better, well-rounded, everybody being able to be, quote, "in charge." My philosophy, and I think committee chairs will tell you, my philosophy as president is that the committee chairs and their respective administrators really set that committee agenda. There is not something that at least when Jeff and I serving as board and Vice President got involved in. We allowed what was coming through channels to come through channels to then set the board agenda, which allows everybody some leadership and autonomy.
And I would agree with you, Meg. I think Trish did a great job. I think you did an amazing job. And I think there was a difference in year one and year two for exactly the reasons you said. But I also think everyone, every time I've been on the board with committees, I've always said to the board president, because it wasn't always the board who got to decide that, sometimes it was just the president or Vice President. And I said, "Put me where you need me, or want me, or where I might learn something." So I think it's a good idea to give every board member an opportunity to do something they haven't done, because one of the things it does, it makes us a well-rounded board, but it also gets a new set of eyes looking at things differently, with different knowledge, different experience and that. And I think that's a really good thing. And I've learned a lot from other board members, from their experiences and that. So I think that falls to the chair to bring those things forward, and to learn while they're doing it. So, it's just my opinion.
Sam?
In the 15 to 18 years I've been following this board, one year, the year before last, was the treasurer, not the head of business services, and they do that for a reason. And our policies do say that every board member during their three years should serve on every committee. And I think that's important, that we do. But that's the only reason that I suggested last year that Trish should be also treasurer, if she was going to be the head of business services. And it seems to work out that way. But it's, you know, it's at the will of the board.
Any other discussion, comments?
So how do we take a vote on this? What do we do?
Well, there's a motion on the floor. Motion is second. So if there's no further discussion, I will have Sue call the roll.
What am I calling the roll on?
You're calling the roll on Amy, has been nominated.
Do you want to do ballots instead?
No, this is a...
This is an appointment, okay.
Yeah, it's just a, it's a motion.
Okay, so we are calling the roll for Amy Daley to be the Chair of the Business Services, since she is treasurer, right? Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
No.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto's?
No.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
It carries six, two.
Moving on to item F2, Educational Services Committee, I would call for a motion for Chair of Educational Services.
I nominate, or I move to approve Trisha Baker for the Educational Services Committee Chair.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Amy Daley and a second by Dan Kanto's for Trish to be the Chair of Educational Services.
I think Educational Services meets on Tuesday.
It's, well...
We don't, we haven't decided yet.
I mean, that's something that we'll have to determine.
Right now, it does.
And just a comment on that, one year, we flipped them. We had, it depends on when people can make it. So the two committees who met on Monday switched to Tuesday, and the ones that did on Tuesday switched to Monday. It kind of depends on the makeup of the committee. Because some, you have things you can't do, or other people do. That'll decide, pretty much, as we discuss, who can be on what committee, what nights they are or not available, so...
Plus, I think we also got another thing, too. But the circumstance, the special circumstance of the special damn job, we've got to find out what his availability is for committees, too, before we start.
With whose?
Well, everyone, yeah, everyone will have a chance to weigh in.
Yeah, well, I'll be one, yeah.
Once we get the chairs populated. Okay, any discussion? We have a motion and a second to appoint Trish Baker as Chair of Educational Services.
One other, just a comment. Just as in officers and in appointments on committee chairs, it might be nice to ask the person if they, if that's something that's signed up. We all signed up for specific things that we would like to do or not like to do. I just think it would be respectful, because maybe that isn't something they're comfortable with, so...
Are you willing to serve as Chair of Educational Services?
Yeah, it wasn't what I wanted to do, but I, yeah, I guess, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I guess I would add, if someone has more of a passion for that, I was actually hoping Chris would do it again. But if someone has more of an interest in it than I do, I'm better with the business stuff. So if someone else wanted to do it, I would step back.
Amy?
You can always move to amend the motion.
Well, I don't know if anybody else has an interest.
Okay. So it is my passion, and I love it, and exactly what you said, all those experiences. You know, we've worked towards certain things. I work with five members of the cabinet, and one is, let's see, who's leaving? I can't remember. I think Greg's leaving, Jenny Miller's leaving. It's gonna be a big change. I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to have somebody else have the opportunity to do it. I just think it's one of the most important things we do, because it's what's happening in our classrooms. So if you say, "It's not what I want," I'm happy, I love it. So, but I don't want to take that opportunity away from you, either. Because I think you would, I think you'd do well in that, so... It's up to, you know, it's really up to you.
I'll go back to my, I think it's important that, to the extent that we can spread the opportunities around, I think we'll be a better board. But it's whether somebody feels...
Yeah, I think it's fine.
It is going to be a committee that's going to have a lot of substance to it this year, and a lot of new, with new superintendent and new personnel. And Chris has done it for a while, and again, fresh eyes on it might be very helpful for the district.
Any further discussion? Are you comfortable?
I can do it, that's fine.
Okay.
You'll be good at it.
Okay. I believe we need a roll call.
This is for Trish Baker to be the Chair of the Ed Services Committee. Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
And Mr. Kanto's?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Okay, item F3 is Human Resources Committee Chair. Could I have a motion for Human Resources Committee Chair?
Well, since I'm going to ask to serve on negotiations, I would be happy to chair HR.
I move to nominate Chris Scott for Human Resources Chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I'm comfortable with doing that. If anyone else is interested, I've been pretty much serving on a lot of things for 14 years, so if someone else would like to put their name, if that's what they would like to do, I'll take my name out.
I'll say what I said. I think if we can spread, if we can spread roles around, Jeff has currently been Chair.
I've been on it, I have not chaired it, but I think...
I would be more comfortable, I mean, again, I'd be more comfortable if we have more people involved in leadership roles. I just think it spreads the authority and the power around. And to me, I think that makes a stronger body. But I don't know if Jeff would be willing to do it, to chair Human Resources.
No, I think it'd be great, let Chris take it.
Judy Ranow was indicated she would be interested. She is not here this evening. So she is not able to voice her opinion. So Chris, it's up to you.
I'm happy to do it. I think it's a place I would do really well in. But if someone else wants to do it?
I will be voting against. I think we should have somebody else. I would be supportive of Judy doing it. Again, she's interested in doing it, she's got experience in it. And I think it's important as a board that we have power spread. So, anyway, any other discussion? Okay, Sue, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Baker?
Are you, I'm sorry, I just have one more question.
Oh, sure.
Are you gonna move to nominate?
I'm gonna vote no for Chris, because I think that...
But someone needs to nominate Judy if...
Nope.
There's already a motion on the floor.
There's already a motion on the floor.
To vote on that motion.
No, I understand that. I'm voting on that motion. But my question is, are you moving to, if Chris doesn't succeed, then are you going to move to nominate Judy?
If nobody else does.
Or are you going to? Okay, okay. Then I will vote no, only because I, Judy should get an opportunity if she's had an interest, if she's expressed an interest. Excuse me, if she's expressed an interest.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
And I'm gonna vote no for the same reason, because I think...
Trust me, I'm not offended. I just, one of the things I have to say, though, we all filled out a form, and Judy's not here. It would've been really nice to see what the results of that was, what the board saw.
Judy wasn't able to access her form, but she...
But we got nobody else's, either.
She indicated that she was interested in being Human Resources Chair.
I know, but we didn't get anybody else's request who might have wanted to be Chair, or might have, we didn't get them. I didn't get them. Did you get them?
That's because three people didn't fill it out, so...
Okay. Well, and it's not, I'm not blaming anyone.
I'm just, Judy's, this is her second year on the board, I think it would be good for her.
I totally understand, I'm not offended at all. I'm just saying it would be nice, because other people might have wanted to do that.
Well, then...
And they didn't, we didn't get to see what people wanted to do.
But someone could make that motion.
They will, I'm sure.
Ms. Earler?
No.
Mr. Kanto's?
No.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
It's tied four-four.
But fails.
Okay, so I'm actually going to, we're doing leadership here. So I guess I would nominate, trying to decide. I know someone mentioned they had an interest in that. They do have a leadership position, so I will go ahead and nominate Judy.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? There is a motion and a second on the floor to nominate Judy Ranow for Human Resources Chair. Any discussion? Sue, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto's?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Moving on to item H4, Policy and Legislation Committee. Could I have a motion?
I would like to nominate Dan Kanto. I had the floor. Don't take my floor. Sorry.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to nominate Dan Kanto, who has been a member, a valuable member of that committee for a period of time. Do I have any discussion? Any discussion? Sue, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto's?
Would look bad if I voted no.
Passes eight zero.
Okay, we are moving on to the more complicated part, which is item H G, Appointment of Members for Board Standing Committees, and I'm wondering if we could have the superintendent, maybe you could go to the whiteboard and just...
Did people...
I do have it. The problem was, not everybody had, people had problems accessing it, so a couple people, it didn't show up, but I do have the names and what committees they asked for. If you want me to put that up there real quick.
We could put the, if we can populate the Chair maybe at the top, and then we can figure out potential members and figure out also potential, maybe on the side, figure out if there are any individuals who cannot attend a particular night. So I know we have, Trish is unavailable Tuesday nights, Jeff is unavailable Tuesday nights. Is there anyone else who's unavailable on either Monday or Tuesday night? Judy is available both Monday and Tuesday night.
So am I.
So you, okay, are you available both?
Yes.
Okay, so the two...
Oh, you're doing chairs.
I'm just putting the chairs up, right?
Yep.
If I did it wrong, let me know.
Oh, I get Sue.
Okay, so...
I think I'll use green.
Do you want me to tell you who said that they would be on the committee?
Yeah, that would be great. Maybe towards the bottom, and then we can populate towards the top.
Okay, Business Services, who said that they would like to serve?
If Judy did not respond, she indicated she's willing to serve on anything, so...
Did we decide what nights, what's gonna be what night?
We haven't yet, other than, other than Ed Services will have to be Monday. So Ed Services will have to be Monday, because the Chair can only serve on Monday. So right now the...
It doesn't matter for me.
I am betting, you and I have some of the same meetings to go to on Tuesday nights, space and properties in particular.
Which would be more of a concern for you in the future than for me.
Okay. Okay.
Space and properties will be in a different time.
Like so?
So Judy can do either night?
Judy can do either night.
Okay. Okay, so why don't you read off the people that put Business Services as an interest?
Baker, Daly, Kanto's...
Daly already has.
Daly's already on there.
Kanto's and Levine.
And Ranow indicated she'd be willing to...
Okay, well, we'll go. Okay, how about HR, up in the...
Committee? Baker, Daly, Ebel, Kanto's, Levine.
I think I put mine in the...
I had two without names. Yours might have been one of those.
Well, I did sign my name, so I put in both.
And Ranow also.
Right, well, she's Chair.
Right.
Oh, she's Chair, that's right.
Ed Services, Daly, Kanto's, Levine.
That's bad.
That's bad.
And Ranow.
Policy?
Levine.
Just Levine.
Come on.
And Ranow. So we are in a position where our policy...
Where's ours?
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't get them all. I have, Chris's didn't come through, Judy's didn't come through, and yours didn't come through, so we can put you wherever you want to.
Business Services, HR, I mean, not Business Services, Ed Services and HR. I probably need to learn Business Services, but...
HR? I should use last name, it's far.
So...
Right, those two?
So, so, again, I'll tell you, the hope is, we got eight board members who can serve on committees. We've got four committees. The best of all worlds is everybody serves on two committees. In the past, that has not been the case, because there were certain members who only wanted to serve on one, but my hope is that everybody would be willing to serve on two. Jeff, is there another one that you would be willing to serve on? Right now, we just have you on Monday. Okay, so Ed Services potentially, because that's gonna be Monday. Okay, do we have, everybody else, we have everybody else that's on at least two?
Actually, I did three last year, because we had somebody who wouldn't...
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm happy to do, I mean, I can do either night, so, yeah, I can get everybody else.
If we can get everybody to serve on two, I think that's the best of all worlds. We've got the broadest input.
How about if you look at who's now got their name on three, and ask them, like, Sam, you're on three or four. One, two, three, you're on three, so maybe this two.
Four, who's on all four.
A four, you're on all four.
So, so if we put, if we put Ebel on... You want Ed Services and HR?
Those are both Monday night?
Well, we, they, they could both be Monday night.
Don't we have to decide that before, so people know what they're...
No, we're trying, we'll try to figure out how we can, I think we gotta figure out if we have... Amy?
In having attended all of the committee meetings in the past, Policy and Legislation and Business and Services, Business Services tend to be the ones that run really long, but if we would keep Ed Services and HR on opposite nights, it can kind of even out the number of nights or the amount of time per night, rather than have two really long and two shorter. But I'll tell you, it's, right now, that's not the case anymore.
Business Services and Ed Services are the long ones.
Yes, they are. Business Services and Ed Services. HR may run a little bit longer now, because we're gonna be getting into studies, so we may have some stuff we're working on. Policy and Leg has been pretty short, frankly.
So maybe we should go ahead and put Business Services on Monday night?
Yep, or, what do you know, Tuesday.
Put, I'm sorry, on Tuesday. And if we put HR on Monday, and we put Policy and Leg on Tuesday.
You put the shorter one first, right?
Doesn't really matter, because we'll schedule them.
You gotta, yeah, you gotta lock in a time.
So if we put the two people who are gonna only be on Mondays on... Oh.
Oh, I haven't yet, I would also put in for Policy and Legislation, so then if it would work out, you know, two days on one night.
Okay, so put Amy on.
That's a good idea.
So the, so the two people that can only serve on Monday are Ebel and Baker, so let's put Ebel and Baker on HR, and put Ebel on Ed Services. Can we try that, just to start?
Ebel on HR, and Ebel on Ed Services.
Yep, and then add Trish to HR. Okay, so...
How many have you, three on each committee? Three board members on each?
Three board, well, four including the Chair. Four including the Chair. So...
So Business, so, did you sign up for Business? Amy, you did, right?
I did, yeah, I'm the Chair.
He's the Chair.
Okay, you're chairing.
So if Ranow is Monday, HR, we could put Judy Monday, Ed Services. It would be the same night. Why don't we, why don't we start with that?
It's the same people on both committees.
So then we would have, right now, then we would have three of our board members have their two. So, so we can take them, let's start with maybe taking them off, and see what happens.
I think you take Baker off of Business Services, which is, because it's a Tuesday, right?
Right, yep, yep. So you can take, so then we... So it looks like we got Policy and Leg. Levine, Scott, Daly, Kanto's.
So if you, that's Tuesday, so if you put me, does somebody else want to be on Business? I can go on Business and take me off of one of the other ones, and that way I've got Tuesday and I have two.
Okay.
How's that?
So if we put, let's put Scott on Business.
Eight two up here, and Scott.
But we gotta make sure we have you, Barb.
Yeah, we gotta get Barb on.
We have to get Barb on.
We still have two, Baker, Baker's each on Ed Services.
Barb wants to be on the two Mondays, so let's stick Barb on the two Mondays.
She is on.
Yeah, HR and Ed Services, that's Monday. Those are the two you want, right? So let's put Barb on those, so we've got those populated. Okay, so those are done. So we can do... And then we've got Scott, Levine, and...
Yeah, taking off of Monday, taking off of Ed Services and HR, and then I'll be on Policy and Business.
And so then we can put Levine and Scott and Daly on Policy and Leg. So do we know that we got two on every, everybody's got two, and everybody's got the same night, right?
Yep.
Except you. I don't have any, well, but I, I mean, and...
She's got every night.
I strongly encourage, even if you're not on a committee, I strongly encourage if you have the ability to attend, it is incredibly helpful, both for background and for you as board members, to be able to get questions answered by administrators prior to the board meeting, and it also helps to make board meetings move more efficiently, because everyone has a better understanding of the conversation that's occurred at the committee level, which is where the work should occur, that groundwork that then brings it forward to board. Any comments or discussion or questions with respect to what we have up there? Business, so, so then let's do the next thing, which is, well, we can wait and do that, because that's coming later. So Business Services would be Daly Chair, Scott, Kanto's, Levine, HR, Ranow Chair, Ebel, Baker, Portson. Ed Services Chair is Trish Baker, Ebel, Ranow, Portson. Policy and Legislative, Kanto's Chair, Levine, Scott, Daly. Could I have a motion to that effect?
Move to approve as...
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion by Daly and second by Scott. Any further discussion? Could you call the roll, Sue, please?
Mr. Kanto's?
Yes.
Mr. Levine? Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Okay, we are moving on to item eight H, which is Appointment of Board Members to District Negotiations Committee. Three for action. I'm gonna step back a little bit. This past negotiations committee, we had three members, because three members wanted to serve. Historically, there've been times where there've been just two board members. We have two administrators who are on that team, our Human Resources Director, who is our lead negotiator, and Tom Owens is also on that. So with that, I would open it up, I guess, to who would like to be a part of that, or if I can get a motion from someone in the second, and then we can discuss it. Scott?
So you want us, a motion to appoint someone, or...
Yeah, why don't you throw a couple names? I would refer you.
Chris, I'll make the motion then. I moved to nominate Judy Ranow, Chris Scott, and Sam Levine to the board, or District Negotiations Committee.
Okay, do I have a second to that?
A second.
Okay, so the motion is Scott, Levine, and Ranow. Any discussion?
Just, just a comment, I guess. In negotiations, our HR Director and our Business Director really are the spokespeople in negotiations. The board members are there to let the board know what's being presented. If they have comments, we caucus and have conversations. We do not normally have conversations at the table. The board has already directed those members as to what, what they allow and what they're looking for. So we're really there as representatives of the board, but we're not actually having the conversation with the other team, so, just so people are aware of that.
So what Chris is saying is that board members don't talk at the negotiations table, or Florence gives them really dirty looks.
Yeah, actually, she does it.
But ultimately, ultimately, the board sets the parameters with respect to bargaining, and the lead negotiator really is the spokesperson, and really should be the only spokesperson, because you want that consistency and you want no confusion whatsoever, because it's very important that communication is totally clear at the negoti, at the bargaining table. So, all right, any discussion? Sam?
This one thing, I think we made a lot of headway this past year, none of it because of Chris, myself, or Kim, but, you know, we were, like you said, we're there to listen. But I think the joint, some continuing conformity and the people continuing that we're on it before might show something towards the people we're negotiating with, that, you know, we're still serious, we're still committed, and that two and three would be coming back, and I think that's good.
Any other discussion? The only other comment I'll make is that it's incredibly important that members of that group understand that they represent management. That is their role. Bargaining is a, it's, it's, it is a role situation, and as members of the management negotiating team, it is essential when you're sitting at the table that that's the hat that you have on. There have been a couple instances in the past where there was some confusion of members with respect to what their role was, and it's really important that at the end of the day, our administrative team, our negotiating team, our board can trust that that's the hat that board members are wearing when they're sitting at that table. Any further discussion, comments? Could you call the roll, Sue?
This is the motion to appoint the negotiation team, Ranow, Scott, and Levine. Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto's?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
So, and I just want to note, we just provided a note to me, I just want to inform board members, last year, the board put together a quote, it was a schedule for us to try to make sure we organized ourselves with respect to what we're doing now, as well as with respect to populating our committees with community members. We, Sue has put out on the web that we have vacancies with respect to our committees. Currently, the way the calendar runs is the existing citizen committee members will serve one more month on these committees, because ultimately, what we want is for the community members to apply, they will be on committees once appointed, June till the following, you know, for, for that period of time. But ultimately, we want, we wanted the committee chairs to be able to have input as to community members serving on their committees. So that's why we're not appointing community members tonight. We are looking for applications, anyone in the community, we are, you know, very interested in you. You can go on our web, you can contact Sue or the superintendent if you are interested and aren't quite sure how to do that. We have two citizen member positions on Business Services, on Ed Services, and on Policy and Legislation. There are no community members who serve on Human Resources, that is strictly board members. So that's why we're not appointing community members tonight, and, and those committee chairs will have the existing citizen members. Dan will be serving in two roles, his committee for one month, and then we'll be looking to appoint those community members, and so will Barb, that's right, so will Barb.
Right, and you might mention the student and how they're chosen?
So the students, the principal of SPAS will be selecting student members to serve on, as a board, representative on the board, as well as on, on Business Services, Ed Services, and Policy and Legislation. Ed Services, and Policy and Legislation. And we will be receiving that information from John Ballendorf. Okay? All right, so we are moving into item eight I, which is Appointment of Board Members to the following committees. The first one is Boston School Forest. And I guess I'll ask, Sue, did we have any interest in that position?
Yes. Boston School Forest was Amy Daley.
I know Barb was interested also. In-
Go ahead.
Relation to the scheduling of their meetings, I think Barb would probably be a better candidate because they're generally during the business day.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I would like to move to have Barb Portson be our Boston School Forest Board Member Representative.
Second.
Any discussion? On that? Would you call the roll, Sue?
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto's?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Boston School Forest, Barb Portson is our representative, passes eight zero.
Okay, item eight I two is CISA V delegate. I, I, and I don't think it has anything to do with President. I'm not sure. I wound up being it last time. My experience is that I attended one meeting.
There, there is a one meeting?
Down in Portage. And that was the extent of it. That meeting is coming up on, in May. Is that correct, Sue?
I would have to check.
I believe it's coming up in May. We had to send in information. The information indicated that I was the delegate because I was at that time. But if someone else would like to do that, we can send in a sub for it.
Right. It's one meeting a year.
Yep.
It's either in Portage or less, and the time before, I think it was Stevens Point.
Okay, and this one may be in Stevens Point, actually.
Yeah, it may be. So it's one meeting. I don't think it's more than, what, an hour and a half, maybe, two?
No, it's more than that.
Okay, well, maybe two. And you, you vote for our district.
Right.
But again, it's one meeting a year.
Right.
But it's an evening one. I think it's six or seven.
It was an evening.
So if someone-
I mean, I'd be happy to stay on it, but if somebody else would like the experience, you're more than, I mean, that's, that would be fine as well. Did anyone indicate an interest?
I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Baker, Ms. Earler, and Mr. Levine.
I, I don't need to be on there, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Who was it? Baker, Levine, and who?
Earler.
I just said I'd do whatever.
Oh, okay. Well, I would move to have Mr. Levine, Levine? I keep saying Levine, Levine, sorry. Be our representative as the CISA V delegate.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Sue, could you call the roll?
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto's?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes, I guess.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Sam Levine will be our CISA V delegate, passes eight zero.
Moving on to item eight I three, HR Advisory Council. Chris? Oh, do we, did anyone express interest, I guess?
HR Advisory, Sam?
I would be interested in doing that. We had an HR Advisory Committee a couple years ago. And I was really interested in that. I learned a lot. I, I would, I would like to do it if someone else wants to do it.
Is this, I guess I'll ask the question, is this even, is this even an existing entity? I guess I'm asking the HR Director, is this an existing entity?
We don't, we're not doing this anymore?
So maybe, maybe we don't need to do this.
Yes, and, and if we decided to have that again with a new superintendent, we can always ask board members if they wanna do it again.
Okay, so let's, at this point, let's not appoint anybody if it's not an active group. Because it, I mean, it hasn't mattered.
No, it's been a couple years, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, all right, so we'll pass on that one. Do we need, I guess I'll ask the Roberts Rule person. Do we need to make any kind of motion to?
No.
No.
Okay, let's move on to eight I four, Technology Steering Committee.
Ms. Baker.
Yeah, I'll do that. Okay, do I have a motion?
Oh, move to have Ms. Baker be on our Technology Steering Committee for the board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto's?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Passes eight zero for Ms. Baker to be the Tech Steering Committee Representative.
And then we have eight I five, which is WASB Delegate, Legislative Liaison. Again, in the time that I've been on the board, the individual who's Chair of Policy and Legislative has, has served in this role as well. I don't know that that's something that's etched in stone, but it's been a good, it's worked. If you're willing to do it. If Dan is willing to do it. Motion, that Dan be our WASB Delegate Liaison?
Well, I'd be more than happy to if I, if I can help. But if there's somebody else who's expressed an interest, I'm, I don't wanna, I don't wanna pass them by. Just because somebody has, has done the, you know, traditionally is that-
The two fit together works. It works.
I did it one year, and I wasn't chairing the committee.
I did it too. I just, I really encourage the board to have a new member do it. It's very educational.
It is educational. It was a really good experience.
It really is, and it's not tough. And I talked Angel into doing it one year.
Well, that would be Dan.
Yeah.
I mean, he's a new member, so it would be a good-
I think it would be great.
It would be a good fit. It's, it's, it's bringing forward to the board any information that's coming through WASB, and then also serving as delegate at the annual meeting in January. Which is, I'm actually on the WASB Committee at that level, and we pulled together a bunch of-
Resolutions.
Resolutions. And then school districts are asked to vote. It's at one meeting down in Milwaukee, the, on behalf of their school district. And we would sit, we sit with the delegates and walk through the resolutions. Administration provides input as to where, what they feel the vote should be. And so you go there with, with understanding what it is that the district would work for.
It's really, yeah, I think it's a great experience.
Are you willing to do that?
That's fine, I, I am.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, motion, Trish, or do I have a second?
Second. Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you second, or did Chris?
Barb did. Get on the record.
Who's on first?
One other thing, and I don't know if we want, if we can do it with this, but it's a good idea to have an alternate just in case. If something should happen with, with Dan.
Do we have to decide that?
No, I'm just mentioning it for future. I'm just saying.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor.
Second by Baker, and second by Portson.
All right. To appoint Dan as the WASB Delegate Legislative Liaison. Any discussion? Could you call the roll, Sue?
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto's?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
It passes for Mr. Kanto's to be our WASB Delegate, eight zero.
All right, moving on to eight J, which is Selection of Dates, Times, and Place of Regular Board and Standing Committee Meetings. So I guess what we're looking for is, first of all, we had a query go out to board members as to start times to possibly-
I didn't get that.
Change.
I can send that one out.
Oh, I thought we sent that. Okay, so I guess we'll have to ask, and that's the first thing that I would like. The 6:30 start date was to accommodate a board member who is no longer on the board. So, so I guess what we were going to ask is if board members were interested in an earlier start date, start time, excuse me, start time. We were looking at either start time, and this would be for committees, it would also be for board. And the start time would either be, we had 5:36 or 6:30. So I guess, just to get information, do, is there anyone who would not be able to start or has, is not interested in starting at 5:30?
I can't. I have a meeting at the county that doesn't get over until 5:30.
Okay.
I would recommend the six o'clock start time, not only for us, but for the public. If you wanna attend something, 5:30 is, if you, if you work till 4:30 or 5:00, that's really a tough one. I think it opens it up. I six, the 6:30 was actually for a couple people that aren't here. And it does, if, if we have a heavy agenda, it can go long. So I would recommend six, I would make a motion to have. Now, you're saying for both the committees and?
It would-
The board?
It would be both the, the first start meeting would start at six, and the board would start at six.
So I would make a motion that we start the board meetings and committee meetings at six. Do you need us to talk about the length of the committee meetings? Or read them as they are?
Yeah, but first, yeah, let's first do a start. Judy indicated that 5:30 would be okay with her, so she's available at six. Is everybody available at six?
No, I, that's, I'm just getting out of a, a meeting that I have every, I mean, I'm not, I, I just struggle to get here at 6:30, so.
Or both committees and board?
No, on Monday nights.
On Monday nights?
Yeah.
Okay.
For you, that, yeah, that's committee and board.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that doesn't work for me. The 6:30's always worked, you know, I mean, I can get here at 6:30, but, you know. What if the board decides to do it at six? I just may be late a few days. And, you know, it is what it is.
So what time are you, what time do you get done, Trish?
The meeting goes from 4:30 to 5:30 or 6:00.
Okay.
So, and then I try to run home to grab my stuff and grab something to eat.
Board members?
I'm fine leaving it at 6:30.
Yeah, I would prefer to leave it at 6:30, but whatever the will of the board is.
Doesn't make any difference to me.
Discussion?
We have not seconded this.
There wasn't even a motion, I just, I just, actually, I did make one motion in a second.
Yeah, that's right, you did make it.
Okay, so Chris has a motion to start at six. So I guess I'll ask, is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Okay, so the motion fails for lack of a second. Do I have another motion?
I move to start the meetings at 6:30 for the board and committees.
Okay, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion with respect to that? Sue, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto's?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
It passes seven one.
Okay, so this past year, we, well, since committees were populated, we have set an hour and fifteen minutes per committee. So the first meetings would be 6:30 till 7:45, and the second set of meetings starts at 7:45 till nine. What I need is, I guess we need to determine which committees are gonna be first, which committees are going to be second. But first, I think I'll look for a motion from the board as to whether we want committee meetings to run 6:30 to 7:45, and 7:45 to nine.
I thought that worked pretty well.
Do I have a motion to that effect?
I'll, so.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. The committees will run 6:30 to 7:45, 7:45 to nine on Monday and Tuesday nights. Could I have any discussion about that? Could you call the roll, Sue?
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto's?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Okay, and now we need to determine the order for committees. So Monday, we've got HR and Ed Services. I guess my sense would be, just in the interest of administration, we have more administrators who have to be here for Ed Services. It might be more convenient for them if that meeting went first and Human Resources went second. And I guess then, my other thought would be, we do Business Services first on Tuesday, and we stick with Policy and Ledge second. But I, I mean, I guess it's, the superintendent is the Policy and Legislative Liaison, and is usually here all night anyway. So it makes sense that, that that would be later and that, you know, the Business Services would be earlier because Tom Owens wouldn't, doesn't have to hang around for Policy and Ledge then, and he doesn't live out of the community, so.
And I would agree with it, especially with Ed Services, because if you put, I can tell you that it's so meaty that if you put Ed Services second, you'll be here forever. Because it's something everybody, everybody wants to talk about. I think you need a limit at that time. So I would definitely put, I mean, I can make a motion to support what you just said. So Ed Services would be first.
Human Resources second.
Resources second.
And then Tuesday's Business Services first, and Policy and Legislative second.
Right, so that would be my motion.
Do I have a second to that? Second by Daley. Any discussion about that? Okay, could you call the roll, Sue?
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto's?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
It passes eight zero.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item nine, Superintendent's Report.
Can I, sorry. Can I just ask that you clarify, I mean, you know, committees meet that first whole week, Can I just ask that you clarify, you know, committees meet that first whole week, and then the board is effective all Monday, just so that we know when we're setting out dates and clear conclusions.
So we have done committee meetings the first week of the month, and board the second week, and then in the, on a Monday, and in the event we need a second board meeting of the month, we do that on the last Monday of the month.
Fourth Monday.
The fourth Monday, excuse me, the fourth Monday. We ask board members to, to the extent possible, reserve that fourth Monday, but we do try to give you as much notice as possible when we're going to have that second meeting of the month. It tends to be something that is not of a, quote, emergency nature, but of business like tonight that we need to get done, or if we want to do a particular workshop, or we need a deep dive into something. So why don't we go ahead and have a motion to that effect? Can we have a motion to that effect, that we'll be doing committee meetings on the first Monday and Tuesday of the month, board meeting, regular board meeting on the second Monday of the month, and then if there's a special board meeting, we would look to have it on that fourth Monday of the month? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Could you call the roll, Sue?
Mr. Cantos?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Okay, thanks. All right, moving into item nine, which is Superintendent's Report.
Nothing for tonight.
Okay, item 10 is Consent Agenda, A, Minutes from April 11, 2016, Regular April Meeting.
Move for approval as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And there is a revised adjutant table. Any discussion?
Yes. 9E2, you have a motion and a second for your first, where it was moved to second, to Ms. Baker, Scott, to approve the Hoover House raise, and then it was sent back to committees, however, there is still that motion that's hanging out there. There should be a statement after the vote saying that the motion died due to it being returned back to committee, otherwise you have a hanging motion, and then.
So do you want, why don't you provide the language?
I did, I emailed it to her. I'll, I can, can we?
Yeah, I'll take my motion back.
Take the motion back and second back, and then I can.
Amend, or make a motion with those changes. Or however you want.
Well, there's more. Sorry, and I don't mean to be like nitpicky.
I hope not, because you're pretty.
Yeah.
Sorry. 9F3, for the Wisconsin Alliance for Excellent Schools, you have the motion, and then you have an amendment to the motion, and there is no vote that corresponds with how the motion to amend was passed. And then it goes straight into the vote for the amended motion to approve the contribution. So there needs to be a vote included in there also. I'd actually move to return this to the next board meeting after, to allow for revisions.
Do I have a second to that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Thanks for finding those.
You're talking about 9F?
9F.
The contributor to Wisconsin Alliance, is that the one you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
When the amended motion passed, there was no, there was no reason to vote on the original motion.
That's what Amy just brought up, Sam. That's what Amy brought up, so that's something that we can go ahead and have.
Well, and so there, there could be two ways that this could be, and I don't recall, it would have, you'd have to go back and watch the video, either it was like a friendly amendment where I say, well, Chris, what about this, and she says, I'll take mine back, and I'll change it to be this, and you don't have a true amendment, or there was actually a true amendment motion, but if she took her motion back, or Angel took her motion back and put a new one out, then there would be no reason to have the first motion, because they took it back, you can cross out that one by fax and Scott, and then just have the new motion. But that would take some research, and we can look into that and bring it back for the next meeting.
Well, we'll check on, we'll go ahead and check on those two. Okay, do you want to call the roll, please, Sue?
Sure, and this is to amend the agenda and bring it back for the May 9 meeting, I mean, for the minutes. Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Cantos?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Okay. Moving on to item 11A, Business Services, Approval of Signature Faximally Resolutions.
Just need a motion in there?
Yep.
Yeah, so I'll move to approve the, excuse me, the signature facsimile resolutions for the committees.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The substance of this is that the existing signatures will continue to be in full force and effect until we are able to get new signatures of the appropriate officers to be able to move forward and get those filed correctly. So there's a lag time, clearly, so we're just talking about an interim.
If anybody would like, you guys can sign up tonight.
Okay, so any discussion on that? Do you want to call the roll, Sue?
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Cantos?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Okay, the next item would be 11E1, Recommendations for Employment, but we don't have any here, so we'll move right on to item 12, which is meeting dates, times.
It's out of order in the packet, it's.
Oh, okay, I didn't see it, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, we do have one. It is a motion for Erin McCoy as a special ed supervisor.
Move to approve the personnel recommendations as presented.
Second, okay, any discussion? Could you call the roll, Sue?
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Cantos?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
All right, thanks, thanks for bringing that to my attention. Moving on to item 12, Meeting Dates, Times, Locations, Future Agenda Items. Next board meeting is May 9, which is our regular meeting, and of course, our committee meetings will be that week before. Moving on to item 13, we have a contemplated closed session for A, 1985, for N1, for N1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, specifically 2015, 2016, and 2016, 2017, negotiations with SB, ABA, Apps Command, Teamsters, specifically strategies and offers, and B, 1985, for N10, for N1C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically to discuss resignation of a professional staff member and take action if appropriate.